Hello, everyone, and welcome to the City of Bel Air Beach Final Budget Public Hearing. It is now 6:30 PM September 18th. And this meeting will come to an end with legislative legions. The United States of America, two republics, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Present.
Councilmember Kim Elliott.
Present.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reifler.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Moore.
Present.
Thank you, Renee. All right, let's move right on to item number one. This is consideration of Resolution Number 2024-05. Mr. Moore, would you please?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here at the building. So I'm going to read the entire resolution. This is Resolution Number 2024-05, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, establishing the final Adalor Village Rate for the fiscal year 2024-2025 for the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, at 2.0394 mils, and establishing an effective date. Whereas, the annual estimate of anticipated revenues and expenditures of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, has been submitted by the City Manager and it works appropriately at the City Charter. And whereas the City Council's view, the City Manager's proposed budget amended it intelligently adopted the amended budget. And whereas the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, is required by the City Charter to adopt an annual operating and capital improvement budget for each fiscal year. And whereas said budget must indicate proposed tax levy for the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida. And whereas observed all due process and appropriate procedures required by the City Charter in Chapter 209065 of the Florida statutes, including a notice of public hearing, the City Council now deems it necessary proper and in the best interest to the public to adopt by resolution the millage rate. Now therefore, the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida hereby resolves that the Adalor Tax Millage Rate for fiscal year 2024-2025 is hereby established at 2.0394 mils, that the millage rate levy is higher than the rollback rate of 1.8518, as certified by the County Fraser on July 1, 2024, and has increased by 10.13%. That this resolution shall take effect immediately upon final adoption. This has been a full and final reading of Resolution Number 2024-05. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Reifler, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
All right, let's go to the citizens for comments. Would you like to speak? All right, the citizen comments are now closed. I'm going to need a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-05. Motion made by Mr. Roberts.
I've signed, move that we approve Resolution Number 2024-05.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Roberts, you have the floor.
Since about 15 minutes ago, we just discussed this and approved it, I think it's time to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Would any other council member like to speak on this topic? All right. Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis.
Yes.
And so the resolution passes unanimously. The final millage rate for the City of Bel Air Beach is 2.0394 mils for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, and is 10.13% higher than the rollback rate of 1.8518 mils due to a 10.55% increase in property values. The purpose for setting the millage rate at 2.0394 is to fund the general fund expenses for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, through September 30, 2025. All right, let's move on to item number two. Item five, number two, this is for consideration of Resolution Number 2024-06. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution Number 2024-06, to be read in full, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, making appropriations for certain expenditures, expenses, capital improvements, and certain debtors in the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, and establishing an effective date. Whereas, the City of Bel Air Beach will begin a new fiscal year on October 1, 2024, and whereas it is necessarily required that prior to beginning a new fiscal year, a budget should be passed and adopted from the operation of the city government. And whereas the City Council has held the two required public hearings on the proposed budget fiscal hearing, fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, whereas there is hereby established a tax at the rate of 2.0934 mils on the property since January 1, 2024, for the purpose of raising revenue for general fund operations. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida. Section 1, that the documents entitled City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, Final Pangu Budget Fiscal Year 2024-2025, dated September 16, 2024, comprise the total amount of $4,871,75 for all funds recorded. Section 2, the budget is being presented as a balance budget, whereby there are sufficient revenues to offset all estimated expenditures and expenses. Section 3, all budget appropriations are based upon the total expenditure and expenses, even though the budget has been prepared based on line items and summarized to a categorical level. Section 4, appropriations may be transferred for the purpose of equalization when needed by a budget transfer with approval of the City Manager as necessary. This section will not change the total dollar amount of the budget. Section 5, the City Council during fiscal year 2020-24, 2025, may, by resolution, make any amendments to the budget adopted by this resolution, as it may be necessary in progress. Section 6, all budget amendments requesting additional expenditures or expenses must also identify the corresponding funding source. Section 7, cash balance reserves shall be carried forward for prior year recoveries and reappropriated upon open purchase orders, which will be paid in fiscal year 2024-2025. Section 8, this resolution shall be effective on and after October 1, 2024. This has been a full and final reading of Resolution Number 2024-06 concerning the budget. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Speaker Andrew Moore, Mr. Reifler, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
All right, let's go to the citizens for comments. Would you like to speak on this topic? All right, the citizen comments are now closed. I'm going to need a motion for approval of Resolution Number 2024-06. Do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2024-06 as read in full.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very much. Ms. Elliott, would you like to comment?
No further comment, other than the fact that we have the millage rate set. This budget is acceptable, and we cannot provide for any deficits that will impact this budget.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the council? All right, since we have none, Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis.
Yes. And so the Resolution 2024-06 passes unanimously. Resolution 2024-06 is adopted, establishing a budget for the City of Bel Air Beach for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, with a final millage rate of 2.0394 mils, which is 10.13% higher than the rollback rate of 1.8518 mils. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion made.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned. We're going to move right over to the next meeting. All right, here we go. Does anyone need a break before we start? No? Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:38 PM, and the September 18th, 2024 City Council meeting will come to order. This evening's invocation is presented by Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you'd like to go down your head, it would be wonderful. Heavenly Father, most times when we start these meetings with a invocation, we mostly talk about things that we need help with. And that's a good thing, because things always work out better when we go to you first. Tonight, I'd really like to spend some time talking about the blessings that you provide to us in the wonderful city of Bel Air Beach. My wife and I have been here almost five years, Father, you know that. And it never confuses me when I come across the bridge and the beauty that I get to see and the blessings that I get to see in this wonderful city. There's people who save all the year and take vacations here, and we actually live here. So that blessing, we all thank you for that, Father. The people that live in this wonderful city, the neighbors, the friends, you know, when I drive through the city, Father, and you know this, I get to see people walking their dogs, they stop to talk to their neighbors, they have conversations, they enjoy each other, and you know better than I that this is not always, that every town or city gets the benefit from. So thank you, Father, for all of these things that we get from your blessings. In closing, Father, I'd like to also, I just had a thought earlier this week, that, you know, the city has the opportunity to spend three minutes up the podium to talk about anything they want to that's not already on the agenda. Wouldn't it be kind of a wonderful thing if we had citizens and people who live here pick the opportunity to come up to that podium and talk with you, Father, about things that you have given to them, things they're happy about, even challenges that are maybe before them? So I'd just like to toss that out there, Father, that if the citizens and people of our city want to do that, that would be awesome. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Now, please rise and join me in the prayers of allegiance.
The United States of America, two republics, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Renee, I'm going to ask you to call the roll again.
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Elliott.
Still present.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reifler.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Moore.
Present.
Thank you, Renee. All right. First item is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion is made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Now we move on to citizen comments. If a citizen would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda, please raise your hand, wait for your call on. We ask that you limit your time to no more than three minutes, and remember to direct all questions and comments to the council. Would anyone like to speak? Yes?
Sort of as a follow-up to Councilmember Roberts.
Could you state your name?
Pardon?
Could you state your name and address?
Leslie Notaro. As a follow-up to Councilmember Roberts' invocation, I hope you guys all got to see that full moon last night. It was unbelievable. That's it.
Thank you very much. Would any other citizens like to speak? Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank you guys and Gaddis for giving us the opportunity to bring some issues. My name is Glenn Daniels, 921 Cedar Drive. I have a very simple question, and actually, it's actually for the City Manager. I'm just wondering, are we still on pace or on schedule in order to get the, excuse me, in order to get the ballot put in, in order to keep the flooding that's happening at the end of the block?
When we don't respond, dear citizen comments, what we do is we give the responses whenever the City Manager's time comes up. So it's not a back-and-forth conversation.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? All right, citizen comments are now closed. All right, item three, we have presentations from Nellis County Sheriff's Office. Most likely, we only have code enforcement. Is that correct?
At this time, yes, sir.
Okay. Come on up, Deputy Trump.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Trump from Nellis County Sheriff's Office. I am the code enforcement officer. I apologize, I do not honestly know what the, as far as the sergeant or the corporal would be normally presenting for you, and I try and find an answer for you.
Actually, I can probably answer that for you. It's because we're off schedule.
And then very well, maybe today, if the, those of the meeting have been changed.
It's not the first time that's happened, so it's probably on us, but I don't know.
Anyway, we can catch up next, next being if we need to be as far as anything major that happens and stuff, not really sure it passed up.
I think City Manager Reed, where you have that report, so you can give that, you can give the report after Deputy Trump gets his code enforcement report. Then we're...
Certainly, yes, sir. My reports are short for the month. I have 35 entries throughout that. The main thing we dealt with, again, with the hot weather in the summer, is the high grass issues and weeds and things like that in front yards and stuff. So that's one of the major issues that we are trying to address with the residents and trying to take care of that. Other than that, we have a couple of trailers and boats that were easily taken here, a couple of unmaintained pools, that one of the cases is still kind of ongoing with that one, because at the point, there's no need of the residents, and we're trying to follow up with family members and trying to get some other help with that. Beach enforcement's been a little bit like this month, one, I was on vacation, two, because of the extreme high tides that we've been having, and unfortunately, we've lost the beach through the storms and everything else. It's a little bit harder to get out in the ATV, but we are trying to get out there. I know the nighttime guys have been out there quite a bit, as much as they can with the lower tides and trying to rock. So the fact, basically, I had five entries, referenced just other enforcements, which are contacts, found property, had an alarm call, and a meeting that I needed to attend. Anything else, or any questions that I can answer for you?
Council?
I have one question, and this is not directly related to Bel Air Beach, but I wanted to be providing insight on the number of what seem to be derelict boats that are out in the harbor here.
The derelict boats are handled by our Marine Enforcement Office. They are actively tagging those vessels as they can. Again, understand that it's not an overnight process, or, again, I used to be in charge of the marine unit myself before I originally retired the first time. It usually takes sometimes 30, just possibly 60 days to get these boats out, because, one, they have to go through a type of investigation in order to try and find the owner, try and give the owner, it has to have the opportunity in order to bring the boat back into code, raise the vessel. At its been sunk, like there's a sailboat over there at the moment right now, which has been tagged. Anyway, they have to have a certain opportunity and a certain amount of days. After that, it would go to, once that hearing is done and is deemed that the boat is, basically, it would be salvaged, then we would take over the boat, and then after that, it takes, you have to get salvage company out there and get them contracted through funds with the state and county in order to get the boat either raised or towed out and basically disposed of. So it's just kind of an overnight process, unfortunately.
No, I understand that, but I am concerned whether it is budget, I mean, are there funds available that'll deal with these things?
The major amount of funds usually comes through grants by the state through FWC, but the county does kick in a certain amount of funds to try and help with the ongoing problem. But the majority of the funds come through grants through FWC.
Can you provide any insight as to why this is happening, and similarly, what brings it?
Man, you know, just through history and everything else, you get people that have lived on these boats, you know, and for some reason, they're not living on them anymore, or they do live on them, and unfortunately, they become so deteriorated that they will fall under that category. You'll get the boats that people just can't afford to take care of them anymore, maintain them, and they'll basically anchor them out there, let them go, and, you know, just don't maintain them anymore, and eventually, they're going to fall into that category.
Thank you.
So various.
Yeah, and I think historically, we have been no boats, and all it takes is one. And there's two, and it just continues on.
It does. I know, I know there's a couple out there right now on the other side of the bridge, and I know that they have them tagged, like the sun sail, but you can see the tag that's actually on the mast and stuff. And our region is doing a really good job, because we have over 700 miles of coastline in Nellis County alone and stuff, and there is, you know, a lot of boats throughout the New York Beach, throughout Bel Air, plus Eaton, all these major cities, St. Pete. St. Pete usually takes care of most of their own, but we do help out in the St. Pete area and that, and with FWC also. So all the entities are in there trying to, you know, handle this problem and keep up with it.
Is the sun sail leaking?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, as far as you, I would assume you're talking about fuels or things.
Yes.
Not to my knowledge, no. If they had problems with leaking fuel or anything else, then the Coast Guard would go involved with that, and they would immediately take action in order to mitigate that.
Mr. Bankard?
I just want to thank you for cleaning up the other side of the street on that baby line. I don't, we're in the theater whenever anybody says.
Took a little work. Finally found somebody to, you know, take, manage it and everything else, and actually, a couple of the lots on the other side of the street have now been sold, were taken over by construction companies, and I've already talked to them. I actually went out and I talked to them. One is like Al, for example, is Albert's Construction, and a real nice guy, and he said he would try and keep everything cut and managed, everything in the front as much as he can.
The one I know that's growing in the street, about, we'll bring that, we should finally announce somebody. Any other questions or comments, Deputy?
Yes.
So what I actually like having you up here, and so I'm curious, do you receive a copy of the regular law enforcement report?
I do not usually print it out, but I do get it, because they do the email, just like they would send the packet out, and so from now on, in cases that happen again, I can print it out.
I just think you're a much better speaker than the City Manager is. If you would, would you just print that out, and if the guys don't show up, whoever it is that normally presents, would you present for us?
I would be more than happy to do that.
All right, I greatly appreciate it. City Manager Reed, now that I've given you a hard time, you're up. Thank you, Deputy.
So I'm doing the police report. Police report. So I took a look at it, and it looks like we've had a pretty good low streak since June 24 and July 24. We only had one crime reported under the assault category. Year-to-date, July 2023, year-to-date, we're at 14 crimes reported, now 24 year-to-date, we're at 10. So we're coming down, at least compared to last year. There were five people arrested in this city in the middle of July. There was one felony, two misdemeanors, and four traffic misdemeanors. Deputy Activity, there was a total of 663 events, resulting in 750 units responding. Those were drug controls and house checks, all of the traffic. So we're teaming things. And there were three crashes reported in Bel Air Beach, and I noticed one of them was at the intersection of Gulf Boulevard and Colset Boulevard. I'm interested in more information on what caused that. That's all I got.
All right, since you have the same information we do, I'm not going to ask the questions. Next up is item number four. I don't believe anyone from the Nellis County Fire and Rescue District is here tonight, so we're just going to move on to item number five, which is the City Attorney's Report. Mr. Moore, you're up. No more, Mr. Mayor. No more. Any questions for Mr. Moore? No, sir? No? All right. Item six, City Manager Report. Mr. Reifler?
Thank you, Mayor. Start off at the top of the list. We had a meeting this week with Duke and UCL Consultants of Florida. I asked them to come to our October meeting, which I believe is going to be the 14th of October. So both UCF and Duke will be present, and I want them to first catch up with the council on where we're at in the project, and then discuss options as far as the placement of the equipment for Phase Two, which is North Colset Boulevard. We've kind of been in a standstill, trying to figure that out, request seasonings, so I think it's a good time to just go over everything, and I have presented the options that are available. And that's all I have for that, so I look forward to the October meeting. The stormwater improvement project, as you can see, since we started doing the surveys and doing the great stakes, harbor contracting has been replacing the curves on the streets from 14, they've gone 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, just recently finished 19th, 2021st, and now they're back down to 9th Street. So they've turned the south side of the 9th Street. That leaves us the north side of 9th Street, the south side of 23rd. We have tonight a discussion of 22nd Street, which we wanted to add to the project. So that would be all the curves. At this time, the paving contractor is scheduled to do all the streets in October. So it's going to be a milnery surface for the two-thirds of the streets that are left on the project. Code review services, we did the work session last month. Since then, Mr. Serna and I got a conference called the EFT, and Florida Department of Emergency Management Flood Origins Consultant to discuss, just updating our flood code, which is Chapter 76. And after Mr. Serna is done updating what we discussed, then City Attorney will prepare to start doing first readings on the chapters that we're going to change the ordinance. I had a request come in from the outstanding, the lien on 10325th Street, which was the outstanding construction permit that accumulated as of July 15th. It's at a balance of $326,964.63. So I was reached out to asking council to consider a partial lien release for any other property, and if it would even be considered, and how much would be required. So what's happening is, the owner of the house in 10325th Street has another property he has on the market. Someone is willing to buy it, but I found out that the lien, the way it works is that they cross link, so he can't sell his own property until we release it off of the lien that's on 10325th Street. So I just wanted to present that to the City Council for consideration, if they would do some sort of partial lien release, and if so, if they will consider, then how much will you require to release the property? It's an 809 harbor lien in Clearwater.
You know, that's a lot to dump on us without any warning. I think I'd like to see some numbers on paper that we can take with us and think about it, and maybe bring it back up at either the next meeting or a work session.
Okay. Are the repetitive charges, like because I didn't respond daily, we'd tap 450 dollars a day, tip?
Yes, it was... Based on the construction trades of the permit, there was daily fines on each closeout to finish each street.
And that's the fee for the $300,000?
That's, that's all of it. It was just an ongoing fine of the permit being expired.
I'm curious, we, there was fine and payment on the other, the other home that we get a partial, right?
Yes.
Is there any way to, I'm just thinking out of my box here, but is there any way to provide a partial lien release, but not release to that?
Yes, so we can release, we can do a partial lien release if there's, most especially if there's partial payment, we can say, well, in order to release as to property Y, that's not, let's say property X is the property issue, with the lien directly. Property Y will release for X amount, but we're not releasing the remainder. You know, so let's say 100,000 is O, and you say for 20 grand, and I'm just making up numbers amounts, making recommendations. Let's say 100,000 is O, you say for 20,000, we can release property Y, the remaining 80,000 remains do enough. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
Well, that's, that's part of it. And the other side would be, can you release, say, okay, now we have the 80,000... And the other side would be, can you release, say, okay, now we have the 80,000, now we're, we continue to lean. The debt is still 100,000, we don't have a lien.
I see what you're saying, the distinction between the debt and lien. I'm not familiar with that.
It's also closed, but.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that paradigm. But usually what I've seen is you do a release of the lien as to that property, still a lot when it's closed. But at that point, you, you've got the unjust enrichment element, not unjust enrichment, but like the debt was on there, you, that you received some from your, 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 you can't recover the second time, but that's the one of the debt, so I, I wouldn't like that paradigm. The more traditional way is we'll take partial payment to release this other, you know, third property or property that's not the principal concern.
Because like, you never find a mortgage, the note is still good.
Right.
That's not it.
Yeah, I understand.
Anything else, Mr. Reaper?
Yes, I want to jump back. I remember the citizen inquiry on the stormwater valve. So I'm waiting on a flange that fits the pipe at the swell. We, we had the valve, but originally, we're going to have the contractor modify the outflow to fit the valve in. It's a, it's a electrical valve, and I found out through the LawPro, which is the valve company, that they do make a flange that we can use. It's slightly smaller than the electrical pipe, but what it does is you bolt it in, and then you, you mud around the flange itself instead of modifying the whole reinforced concrete pipe. So I expect to have the flange piece in October. And yes, I'm aware of, recently with the high tide, there's been a lot of water coming up in the street. One thing we have noticed is even the Palm Drive, the county system, the title of water was coming out of their valve. So we did, we did hear from residents on Palm that said that's never happened before. And we, you know, filed it with the county and we've been aware.
What, what was the, the underlying issue? I've, I've never seen so many streets flooded with, at a low tide. I've never seen that before. And I mean, there were probably eight or nine streets that were underwater that day.
That wasn't, you're talking about, I was recently talking about this week with the high tide that we experienced. But you're talking about a couple of weeks ago with the rain events. I would sum that up to just the capacity of the water, the flow. It wasn't getting out, it was coming in, or from the rainfall. I do know that there's a lot of counties, or a lot of cities throughout Ellis County, especially inland, that experienced 50-year rain events, and they expose all the weaknesses to the drainage.
See, this, this looked to me like it was sewage.
There was some sanitary sewer overflow. I did report that. The county is still doing the smoke tests. I heard some feedback that they get their concern about the laterals, and that's where the water's coming in. But I also know that the pipe on the 18th that we're planning to line is compromised. So that, especially on the 18th, where it seems to be the, the center of work is going over, that, that may help the problem. At least the water will not get into the ground as quickly by, by our stormwater, but.
All right, and then the other question that I have for you is, have you heard anything from the county concerning our traffic matter? Their recommendations?
I received an email. They said that they were continuing to make the same recommendations. I asked, they said they looked into the merge lane, ended up getting some numbers on that, and also some data of the, the stop bars. But I, what I did ask them is, they were saying that they did not, they weren't tracking any near miss data, but I asked them to provide the data for us because I thought, when I bring it to you, you're going to want to see what they're, what they're basing their conclusions off of. But they're still making the same recommendations. And I also asked them to put all those recommendations in writing, along with the stuff moving the stop bars. So I'm waiting for that, hope that represents.
Any other questions for the city manager?
I have a couple more things. I Work, which is the work maintenance software, we, we started using it this week. It's been going well. The staff's been doing it on their iPad. We're also, we're, we're finishing, like putting together the database for the setup for the stormwater management system, which is how we're going to do our inspection and recordings. So we're still troubleshooting that, but actually having the staff start entering the work orders, get used to the system. We're kind of working through the little problems as they come up. But I just wanted to say that we're, we're excited about it. We see it being very beneficial in the future. I've actually been discussing with Debbie Trump that I would like to try to start doing code reports through the software as well. Because I think if we can start building the reports that way, I can use the software, run the reports instead of messing with the Excel sheets every month, save time.
See, this is what happens. You say something nice about Debbie, and then it gives them action items.
And then one more thing, the HVAC unit for the office side of the building, it, it lost a condenser coil. Just wear and tear, lost the gas, and it's all on a level one, the condenser coil. The, the HVAC programmer came in and was able to keep it pretty cool still. So we're, we're looking at replacement of the condenser coil. It's about $12,500. That's the lowest number I got, the three quotes. I'm planning to purchase, and then I'll provide council the report on that. Prepare.
All right, anything else?
That is all.
Mr. Baker. That storm event that Mayor was talking about, how many inches of rain did you get that, like, now, I have to guess.
It was a couple days.
And that one? No, I'm talking about the one, we had a low tide.
Friday around 5 o'clock.
Yeah, it's whatever happened, yeah.
Oh, that last, the last one. Um, I think the last one, I looked at like just the weather of precipitation trucks, it was like four or five inches.
It just an hour and a half.
Yeah.
About eight years ago, people remember, we had almost about the same time, it was at high tide. And it was only an hour, but it flooded, didn't, didn't come in the houses, thank God. Like it was, it was bad. But like you said, this was at probably the lowest order of the tide, it was a negative tide. It just came down, walkies. Not good. All right, any other voices or comments for the city manager?
Uh, one comment, and that is regarding the code review process. Attorney Moore has given me a lot of really good information. I have reviewed that and reviewed the ordinance regarding signs, and I would draw an objection.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
I would draw the objection to the signs.
Oh, all right. That's good to know. Thank you. Did you have any other comments? All right. Does that conclude your report, Mr. Reaper?
Yes, it does.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very much. All right, now we are up to the city clerk's report.
Captain Lerner and Chief Davidson were provided information on today's meeting. There's a change in the dates. Unfortunately, they just did not show up this evening.
We, our, all of the municipality's schedules work with each other, and all the cases throw them one off, and then they can't end. So I understand.
Additionally, Dominic Cosmo, who was on the agenda this evening for a potential appointment to the planning and zoning board, he was also available on September 4th, but has since left the country and is unavailable this evening.
Okay, all right. Any parents?
That's all.
All right, any questions or comments for the city clerk? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Rose. All right, now we are up to the consent agenda, items eight, three, 10. This is for approval of the August 5th, 2024 City Council meeting minutes, approval of the August 19th, 2024 City Council work session minutes, and approval of the August 28th, 2024 City Council work session. Do I have a motion to agree? Motion to approve, as submitted, code, motion made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. By Lloyd Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just, I have one comment, and that is regarding the August 19 minutes, the very last two lines of the page one. It refers to access insurance, and the actual term is access, E-X-C-E-S-S. Yep, thank you. That whole paragraph, there's more on the next page.
That was it?
That's it.
Is that enough that we can just make the correction?
Sure, the senators can do it.
Adjust that way. Okay, all right, great. So in that case, is that an all in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. General, to the regular agenda, item number 11. This is for consideration of appointment to the planning and zoning board. We have one candidate, but he's not here. It's Mr. Dominic Cosmo. Do we want to move forward with this appointment, or do we prefer to put it off until the next meeting? Which is, probably 14th now, 14th? Yes, council?
It doesn't. I'm finding the way.
General consensus here? Well, let's just call for a motion. Before that, we need to go to the citizens for comments. Would anyone like to comment on this item? Nope, consensus comments are now closed. Would anyone like to make a motion on appointing Mr. Cosmo to planning and zoning board?
Is there anybody here that is on that board, or knows this gentleman?
I spoke with him back and forth a couple times about the responsibility, and we went over the terms and with what the board does. He's interested in serving on the board, that if he does, he's interested in being the chair of the board. Right now, we have one new member that was appointed. We have not had him meeting yet. So it would be voted on within the board, but he wants to take an active leadership role. He threw me a discussion that has taken a lot of consideration to volunteering.
I think because planning and zoning is, well, first off, we've asked for a motion. Does anyone make a motion on this or not? Because if we don't make a motion, we don't have to discuss it.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
All right, motion made by Frank Baker. What is the motion? To discuss, you know, Mr. Seno, what, any motion to discuss it? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, now we can talk about it. So what I was going to say is that the planning and zoning board and board of adjustments are very, they're the, they're the two boards that mean the most to this committee. I think that especially someone that's wanting to make his way to be the chair of this particular board, I would like to actually see his face and give him the opportunity to address the council, share his, his desire, why he wants to be on planning and zoning, and, and then we vote him in, and probably win. Any other discussion at this time?
I agree. We thank the applicant for his volunteerism, but I think we owe some of the diligence.
Anyone else? Yes?
My only, my only question for me is, you had mentioned he was going to be here on the 4th, but now he's out of the country. Do you know when he's coming back?
I do not have that information.
I think it's roughly three weeks, three or four weeks.
From what I understand, his wife would volunteer parts of record.
So there's a good chance he would be back before our October meeting?
Could be close, but hopefully, yes.
This is a, a roll call to, any other comments?
Oh, this is for consideration, I believe, Attorney Mark, I'm elaborating, I believe, for land development code, we need to have any of the ordinances we're proposing reviewed by the planning and zoning board.
Yes, that's, that's a due, power of duty of the board, that's, that's accurate. Mr. Ray, procedureally, I just want to be clear, the motion made was to discuss. So there's no motion that we have a roll call, but as I understand it, it sounds like the board is moving towards tabling this issue rather than substantively what I was about to call it. Would someone like to?
I just, I just have a question. City manager interviewed this guy, is your, is your word handled?
Yes, but I understand the mayor's.
You know, and I, I agree 100% with the mayor, but we have to wait for the board to have been here for. I agree that planning and zoning board are very, very, I, I would love to stand. So, well, we can, right now, we're just discussing, and there's, there's a motion on table just to move forward with this. So we can move forward, or we can table it, or we can go to the council. I motion move forward. All right, in that case, let's go ahead, and we have to vote, we can do this, a voice vote, just to move forward. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
This is not moving in, in the seat now, we, we actually have to, maybe we need another motion to appoint Mr. Cosmo to the planning and zoning board. I make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, in that case, Renee, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott?
No.
And Mayor Gaddis?
No.
All right, so the motion dies, and we'll try it again when he gets back. All right, item 12, consideration of appointment as an alternate to the board of adjustments. We have one candidate, Mr. Douglas Prescott. Is Mr. Prescott here? Hey, there he is. Would you like to come up to the podium and introduce yourself to the council?
I am Douglas Prescott Senior, I live on Hunter and Ween Drive, live in Bel Air Beach, now since, we're thinking 71 or 70. So people run, we can drive from 1997. I grew up on 18th Street, built the first one in Morgan, and I just, and then, 97, I took my house down and built it back in 2002.
Mr. Prescott, have you served on anything for the city before?
I served, I, I did the board of adjustments, which I was doing. I had a design plan when I moved away, to build my house, I had to move off, that'll be true, about six months I stayed, as long as I could. It was not available to rent on my second home I had to rent, that took two years to up the house. So I served as city council, I served vice mayor, deputy projecting officer. I was appointed after I got done doing that to, we just changed the form of government, and I was involved with that, I believe. And they appointed me to interview the potential first-time city manager for Bel Air Beach. And the person I appointed, the bottom of the division was Nancy McCullough, who became our person.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Prescott? I think he's well versed, let's go before he changes his mind. All right, before we do that, we're going to, thank you, Mr. Prescott. Before we do that, we're going to go to the citizens for comments. Would anyone like to comment on the possible appointment of Mr. Douglas Prescott for an alternate member of the board of adjustments? Nope, all right, citizen comments are closed. Counsel, I'm going to need a motion to appoint Mr. Prescott as an alternate to the board of adjustments. Motion, motion is made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. As the record, you have the floor. Like I said, believe he's well versed, probably more of an autodidactic, I think, I agree. Any other comments? All right, this is to appoint Douglas Prescott as an alternate to the board of adjustments. Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes. So, Mr. Prescott, you are a glutton for punishment, and well, thank you for serving our community. All right, now we are on to item number 13. This is for consideration of a correction to Resolution 2024-04. Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is Resolution 2024-04, Resolution of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, approving the superintendent, giving an increase to the city's solid waste collection disposal rates, making related findings, and providing separability and effective date. For the first applying reading, Resolution 2024-04 by Title Home Link. Substantively, do I allow the manager to speak? Substantively, do I allow the manager to speak to this? You've already adopted a resolution substantially similar to this. Subsequent to its adoption, administration realized there was a scripter's error having to deal with the percentages or the transmitted or translated actual rate flowing from those percentages, so this is an attempt to resolve that. Some of you have heard me joke in the past that we don't make mistakes, we make amendments, and this is a reflection of that process.
In this case, 50 cents.
I believe so. Has the manager to speak to that subsequently?
Okay. We expect to see only 50 cents on the bill.
So there are three rates and each rate was meant to increase by $2.50, and that's bi-monthly. And in the transition, I had to correct my calculation sheet, but the resolution itself was short 50 cents on the multi-family can rate. It was the increase from $48, or sorry, from $53 to $55.50. So it's just a correction so that the resolution states the proper rate and then I can submit it to Pinellas County utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Riefer. All right. Let's go to the citizens for comments on this one. This is for consideration of the corrected resolution 2024-04. Would anyone like to? All right. Citizen comments are now closed. Counsel, I'm going to need a motion to approve the correction to resolution 2024-04 where the multi-family can price is $55.50. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. Mr. Baker, you have the floor?
I feel we have no other alternative, but I don't like my trash and I don't like a neighbor's trash either, so. I think it speaks for itself. I don't know what to do with it.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Would anyone else like to speak on this topic? No. All right. In that case, Renee, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes.
And so the resolution correction passes unanimously. Now we're on to item number 14. Consideration of an amendment to the interlocal agreement for the creation of the Pinellas County Metropolitan Planning Organization. Mr. Riefer, you have the floor.
Yes, this is sent to us as an interlocal agreement for our board of Pinellas, and it's an amendment to the original interlocal agreement that each city involved, they're asking for a signature and approval. The highlights of the changes to the agreement is they're updating the seats. There was currently, there was previously 13 members and they're proposing to increase to 19 members, and that is based on the 2020 U.S. Census report of population. The seats being added are two seats to the city of St. Petersburg, a seat to the city of Clearwater, a seat to the city of Charmwood Springs, the county commission increasing one seat to maintain a percentage of the total seats at, I believe, those 20%. And then they're splitting the inland north and inland south to allow for shorter location for the terms. So, a little overview, for the city of Bel Air Beach, we're still included with other beach cities holding one seat. So if you look at what they're proposing, going from 13 members to 19 members, you know, we still have one seat, so for Bel Air Beach, it would be less of a share of the voting rights. And that's pretty much summarizing it.
And would you speak with Mr. Mora about what happens if we don't sign this?
Yes, I spoke to him today and he's prepared to answer.
Well, I think I'm overselling what I'm prepared to do. No, I don't know, I don't know the precise cascade of what would happen if you did not sign on to this. My strong advice would be that you do sign on to it, as it is a matter of federal and statutory compliance. I don't know what funds would be, what funds or projects could potentially be withheld or impacted by not participating in the MBO. It is a metropolitan planning organization and has the, as the resolution and interlocal agreements set forth, it's every other community in some form within Pinellas County is part of it. I'm not sure, were you to be the outlier in that process, what precisely we pull from it, as I did receive the inquiry, I received it late in the afternoon, and I, up until this point understood this to be, I wouldn't quite say a housekeeping matter, but you know, something that's generally typically done as part of general compliance and upkeep.
Right. And what I didn't really understand is why so many beach communities are basically our voice and our vote is being dumbed down by adding more seats to the county commission, the city of Clearwater, and the city of St. Petersburg.
I think that's, you know, inasmuch as you look at the resolution, it's material that's reflected in the population trends in those jurisdictions where we've lost for any multiplicity of reasons, from housing crises, structure rentals, to insert reason here, you've lost your voter base, your population base as compared to some of those larger mainland communities. And I think, and as these seats are portioned based on your population trends, that's how that dynamic is playing out, based on how they can be structured.
And it's probably because we're fully built now versus retina, the other municipalities aren't able to build out.
As you see, I mean, if you're using the 2020 census, which it is, and you go five years, there's, as you, as you actively noted, if you're in the city of Charmwood Springs, in the last five years, you've seen some real development, real growth and developments. There's, they're not building any more beaches.
Right.
You know, and so there's, there's only so much you can do, and then you factor in again, the population trends that you're seeing and where people are setting their residences, their domiciles, and I think those two factors go together and give you the result you have here. But again, as this is how funds and resources are allocated for purposes of planning, we are members of Port Pinellas, right? This sort of flows from that. This is an outflow of that planning process.
Right. Okay. Well, let's go to the citizens for comments. Would anyone like to speak on this topic? Yes?
John Hensley, 22nd Street. If I'm following a conversation and this proposal, it's the largest cities that want more seats. And to your point, Mr. Mayor, like you stated, it seems like we're losing our voice, we're being dumbed down, so to speak. Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, I would, I appreciate you coming up and speaking. After you're finished, I will continue this conversation.
Okay. But. I just, the big guys keep winning, and I don't think, I don't know that we can beat them, even if all those small communities along, you know, the beaches join together. So I'm not for it personally, because I don't want to see our voices diminished. They've got enough voices, that is my comment to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Would anyone else like to speak? All right. Counsel, I'm going to need a motion to approve the amendment to the interlocal agreement for the creation of the Pinellas County Metropolitan Planning Organization. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Lloyd Roberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Shaw Elliott. All right. So, Mr. Roberts, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really see any benefit of saying that we're not going to participate. They are still going to exist. We're just going to have no vote at that point. We're not even going to be part of the organization. So that's why I'm in favor of at least maintaining and keeping that seat, even though from a percentage standpoint, by the organization adding additional seats at other cities, from a percentage standpoint, our voice is lessened, but at least we have.
And this reminds me of a situation we had a few years ago whenever they were proposing raising the gas tax. It was, you remember that, Mr. Riefer? Hello. Yeah, okay. So they, they sent us pretty much an interlocal agreement similar to this, and it was us buying into the gas tax increase. I don't think it actually happened, but they twisted our arms because if we didn't sign it, we wouldn't get the benefit, even though ours is just a tiny little bit, we wouldn't get any money at all. And so we went ahead and signed the thing, even though we didn't really agree for the raising our gas taxes. So this is just another situation where I think you're right. Mr. Mora, if we don't sign it, then there's probably some tiny benefit that we won't get, but also we won't be included at all in the voice. Biggest problem I'm having with this whole, what the red flag that I saw was that it was the Big C and it included the city of Clearwater. What they did was they removed the city of Clearwater, awarded them two seats, and now we're even less, we have less of a voice, because it's all of the Big C except for the city of Clearwater. They're exempt for it, and they got two points to go along with it. So they went from you're lumped in with all the beaches to now you're a big powerhouse and you've got, and you've got extra votes. We can all see what's going on, but I don't know if we really have a choice on this. So, comments? Mr. Baker?
Are these paid seats? I can't find a solid reference.
I don't have to do further research about it. We're not aware of the main paid seats. They should just commission like PTSD and other seats like it's, just like the mayor serving the big seats. It's a global, to your point or not, I think. It's my understanding they are not paid seats. They're, they're made up of officials who serve in other communities.
And I have to agree, Mr. Roberts, I'd rather have some type of voice in there than no voice. Well, that's why I still question. So there's not any other comments. Let's just go ahead and do a voice vote on this. Call in favor?
Aye.
Reluctantly. Any opposed? All right. The amendment to the interlocal agreement passes. All right. We're on to item number 15. This is consideration of authorization of the city manager to execute a contract for law enforcement services with Pinellas County Sheriff's Office for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Mr. Riefer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor.
So this is authorized this year's contract for Pinellas County Sheriff's Office for law enforcement services as well as the as needed code enforcement services. Total contract with a discount that was recalculated this year for Bel Air Shore. A portion of the deputy will be $608,556. And the as needed rate for the code enforcement officer is going to be $59 per hour. We are continuing to schedule them three days a week, four hour shifts, and that seems to be working well. At the request of city council, I did explore contractual services with the local police department. They gave me some numbers and calculations, and from what they're looking at and their budget, they feel that the expense is significantly more than what the sheriff provides. So I just wanted to put that information there for you to compare. So I recommend that we renew our contract with Pinellas County Sheriff Department.
Okay, great. I'm going to have to go to the citizens for comments, and then we'll come back to the council. Would anyone like to comment on this?
John Hensley, 22nd Street. I hope nobody takes this wrong. I appreciate what the sheriff's department does. Really do. You know, they go in harm's way every day, bitten and done now. My point is, I have watched, since I've been a citizen in this community since 2015, when we contracted with the sheriff. The increase percentage wise is typically more than the CPI. And if my math serves me correctly, this increase is somewhere in the vicinity of 6% over last year. And we don't even have a CPI number for COA for social security until a month from now. I really wonder what it is, besides everything is in a contract, because I didn't read a contract. They're not doing more. We're still getting the same amount of service. What I would like to see as a citizen is more traffic enforcement. I've been up here multiple times. The speeding on side streets, speeding on Gulf Boulevard, the turn lane, then uses passing lanes. Passing on a bridge. Now, if the sheriff in Bel Air Blues can sit down there in different places, why can't our deputy, assigned, spend more time, if you will, patrolling as well as monitoring domain clear over there? And again, folks, those of you know, for my front yard, I got a perfect view of Gulf Boulevard. I can see it. All I'm saying is, I think that the COA, the increase is excessive, but we're not getting more on a scale that certain things cost more. But 6% is pretty steep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Other comments from citizens? Citizen comments are now closed. Counsel, I need a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for law enforcement services with the sheriff department. Motion. Motion made by Frank Baker?
Second.
Second by Shaw Elliott. Mr. Baker, you have the floor.
Well, the citizens made some great comments about the 6%. The mayor went to the city of Florida to try to reduce our costs and impact the way life. So it's a better thing. We can't do without. And I agree, there should be more enforcement, you know, if we got more. Going to Beachland on Saturday morning at quarter paint, up to 135 to 19th Street from the causeway, get a guy pissed? And like I said, you see it all the time. So I think we should pass this. I think it's, you know, they are, our deputies and sheriffs department, they do a great job, and we just have to get them to do some more enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Just a question for a city manager or anybody. So if we, if somebody receives a ticket for speeding or reckless driving, whatever the case may be, do we get any of that revenue?
The traffic citations, I don't believe we do. For a ordinance, local ordinance violation, we get a percentage after an administration fees through the clerk. So a traffic citation, I'll double check, but I don't, I don't always see traffic citations on our payments.
Because I agree with Mr. Riefer, where, you know, I go, I take a right on a Gulf Boulevard after I cross the bridge, and I couldn't say many, but more than I'd like to see, where people are like right on my tail and I'm going 135, and they swing over to the left and use the bidirectional way in the past, which is just stupid. First of all, they're definitely speeding. Secondly, that maybe somebody coming the other direction that actually wants to use that lane and they go left turn, and that could turn out really badly for everybody. So it's bizarre. I realize we only typically have one car, one deputy at a time, they can't see everything all the time, but I'm always cheering for that deputy to be. They can't see everything all the time, but I'm always cheering for that deputy to be there when that happens, so I can stop him and comment to them.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any other comments? Nope. All right, I'm going to add that whatever we got notice of this, I actually wrote a letter to Sheriff's Department asking for bullet points that I could share with the council. I've done that once before, but I don't think, although you were here on. Basically, he attributed it to rise in insurance rates, rise in salaries, and the cost of fuel and just inflation in general. It was the, I have left messages for Sheriff Bell Terry before, and now I've gotten a call for a day or two. As soon as I sent that letter, I would say within the hour, he called me personally on my cell phone and wanted to assure me that he wasn't picking on Bellar Beach. Everyone in the county got the same increase. So whatever you were doing before, you got the six point whatever percent increase, and it's just a cost of new business. I had city manager Reefer state that he did contact Largo, and they just, they handed me. So I would love to have an alternative, just so that we have something, so we can choose, sort of like we do with our parking service, but that's just not the case. And if you look at most of the municipalities, the smaller ones like us, they all are doing the same thing. So we're not alone. Nobody's happy with the increases, but I am happy with, for the most part, the sheriff's services. I too would like to see more citations written so equal, the word gets out that Bellar Beach is not the place to do those things, but you can't be everywhere all the time. So that being said, we have a motion on the floor. Is everyone ready to vote? All right, Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes. So passes you down the slate, Mr. Reefer. You are authorized to proceed, and thank you for checking into alternatives.
Thank you.
All right, now we are on to item 16. It gets better. In consideration for accepting the Brown and Brown insurance proposal and authorizing a purchase order to back that, Mr. Reefer, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. So in our August work session, we had a presentation of a proposal by Brown and Brown. The proposal is, you know, as we went over it, and there's a comparison to our current Florida Municipal Insurance Trust policy. It includes some more coverage in different areas of the insurance, and it is at a price, a premium that's a little less than what was proposed by the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust this year, by about $9,000. This is something we discussed starting two years ago, to my knowledge, where I made contact with Brown and Brown, which is another major known insurance group that does local cities. And the first year, you know, he took our numbers and just wasn't able to compete. So I reported back, but he was interested in following up for this upcoming budget cycle, and we worked through the numbers, and he came back with this proposal. And based on the feedback he gave me, especially our workers' comp claims in our history, we are showing up a positive, less worst kind of claims in his business that calculated that were under the average for municipalities around the state, and that it should have affected our rates to come down some, but we did not see that with FMIT. So in the past two years, our total premium has increased by about 58%. I mean, there was the big jump because of the property insurance and some of the storms that hit, but it still, it continues to increase. And Brown and Brown has proven to be just as good as for Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, and they have a lot of similar programs, but I followed up with the cities in the area that use Brown and Brown. The positive feedback was all positive, but it was centered around their customer service and the ability of whenever they needed them, the service continued to excel. I think that's very important, especially for a small city like us, and we need to take care of things when that happens. So there were some questions submitted from council members that the insurance agent, Kyle Stogel, was able to answer from his knowledge, and I've included that email as part of this now. And it is our recommendation that we approve a purchase order for the $76,496 to pay the full year premium for the upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Before we go to the council, let's go to the citizens. If anyone would like to speak on this topic. I hope citizen comments are now closed. Council, I'm going to need a motion to accept the proposal from Brown and Brown and to authorize the city manager to execute a purchase order. Motion. Motion is made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Shaw Elliott. Mr. Baker, do you have the floor?
I really appreciate the diligence in this. Kyle going out for somebody else. I remember when we brought in our current writer a year ago about the increases, she just kept saying, well, everything's gone, everything's gone. This guy went through everything with us. It's a cost savings to the city, it's a referral company, and he registered like three, five, four stars. Good job.
Any other comments or questions?
No, I just, just that everything Member Baker said is round target. You know, we discussed this in detail, and I was very impressed with the representative for Brown and Brown at our workshop. We asked him a lot of questions about this year. His presentation was very thorough. He can understand, and anytime we can save money, it's a good thing.
And I contacted a friend of the family who is very knowledgeable of all things insurance, and she actually, it looked to me like she spent about an hour preparing questions. And they weren't directed towards the insurance company, they were actually directed towards us. What, and we considered this, and we looked at that. It was very impressive, and I greatly appreciate her taking the time to do that. Her name is Kristen Callahan, Rose Callahan. But I passed it off to the city manager, and he just passed it sight unseen, right off to the insurance agent, and he came right back with all the answers. And I don't, did you, did you share that with the council?
In this agenda.
Okay, all right, great. So yeah, I was very impressed, and I think that we're going to be very happy with, for the big company. Are there any other comments? No? All right. This is a big ticket item, so Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes. So, Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to proceed. We ended a good job, time to get fined.
Thank you.
All right, up next, item 17. Consideration of the 23-01 during in-street improvement project change order number 002 for curb replacement on 22nd Street. Mr. Reefer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So this would be the second change order proposed by Harbor Contracting, who is the current contractor for our street drainage improvement project. And they took the job of replacing the curbs on 22nd Street. This includes from the west of the bridge, already developed Boulevard. They used the contract lineup pricing from the bid, and this is the change order that is including all the elements of the work. For cost savings and because the asphalt on 22nd Street was resurfaced in 2020, they proposed removing the one foot next to the, where the curb will be removed, some one-foot asphalt into the center of the street to give them room to form up the new curb. And then afterwards, having one foot of space allows them to get a compactor in to compact the base and then put asphalt back down, but it will not be a clean resurfacing. It'll be a strip of asphalt patch, which will look different than the rest of the road. I included a picture of Louisa Drive previous before we made it, which had a similar work done. It might have been a little wider than a foot in that case, but it gives you an idea of what the street would look like. The only items where we look at the change order that were not on the actual bid are this survey, which it would be the surveying for the streets. That was the actual first change order, was the survey layout of every other street that was originally part of the project. So that's what that item is. And then the one-foot asphalt patch. So since this is something that we did not do in any other part of the project, it is a price that they're giving us that is not contractual. So it was asked what the cost difference would be if we were to resurface the entire 22nd Street asphalt in those areas, and it would be a cost increase of $65,480. I proposed doing the asphalt patch because of just the fact how new the asphalt was. So I'll leave it at that. That is the information for council consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Before we discuss this, let's go to the citizens for comments. If anyone would like to speak on this subject. I assumed you would. Hold on, Mr. Hensley.
John Hensley, 22nd Street. I've been anxiously waiting for this, obviously. All right, so if, just a question. So if I understand the change, the contractor wants to go from the street side of the curb out to the street one foot, so he can perform, is that what you're saying?
Correct. So he'll remove the curb, and then he'll cut, saw cut, yes, one foot towards the center of the street right from that curb.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to be sure. The other comment I want to make, I've been watching this contractor along the way north of the causeway. And frankly, I'm quite disappointed in the fill that they provided after the curbing is put in. It looks like just plain old fill that you would use to fill leveled property. I mean, you know, they dig this up on the backside of people's property, and they put in this stone, sand. I've seen stuff as big as golf balls laying in those piles on the street. I guess that was part of the contract, but I'll talk with you about what I'm going to do when I get done with the curbs on my place, because they're not putting it in my yard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. Council, I need a motion to accept project change order 002 for curb replacement on 22nd Street.
Tell them this.
Motion made. Mr. Roberts, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Shaw Elliott. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we discussed this in one of the workshops, and I do have a couple of questions about the actual invoice that was provided, but the, I think it's important that we do that based on the current status of those gutters on 22nd Street. I think we should go ahead and move forward with that. But I do have a question about, just in my own mind here, Kyle, so the no-pay items for the survey layout and the one-foot asphalt patch. They're not charging us for that? Is that what they're saying?
No, that is saying that this is not a contract price, so this is the price that they're proposing based on the job, but it is not tied to the contract that currently exists.
Okay, okay. All right. And then the items above that, if needed items, for example, $30,000 for replacing the pavers, we may or may not use all of that or any of it.
I would expect the last base on.
Other streets. Okay. All right.
Anything else? Yes, sir. Counsel? Any other questions? No? All right, well, in that case, let's take two of them. Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes. So passes you now, Mr. Reefer. You are authorized to proceed.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to number 18. Unfinished business. Counsel, any unfinished business? Yes.
At the oldest council meeting during council comments, it's put on the record that the city is being credited $48,000 for the past two years from the Sheriff's Department for our Bellar Beach overpayment and Bellar Shore's underpayment from deputy services. By bringing this up on our unfinished business, it was also said on the record by a council member during the council comments, we may not have the amount, a true amount fully owed to the city of Bellar Beach. I went off on that comment, which I do apologize to night, although there is no mechanism to review any council comments once council comments are included by a council member. I do want to say tonight, I do agree with that council member's comment that a true amount to be collected may not have been fully achieved for reasons I saw repayment solely from the Sheriff's Department inside of the territory of the services was changed two years ago. As noted on the record, north budget talks, I further noted toward that work session that a figure of 100 grand made what is truly owed to the citizens of Bellar Beach. On the merit of July work session, July work session placing me in charge of everything of these funds, the mayor also noted that he may have made mistake directing a council member to perform such an assignment during the council comments of orders. While I somewhat agree with the mayor's position, while the mayor does not have the authority to delegate a council member's assignment, in most cases, I do want to note two factors of the mayor's designation placing me in charge of the recollection of these funds. Under section 2.045 under our charter, the mayor should have done meetings under Robert's rules. There are 11 basic rules of duties of the chair under Robert's rules, and one of them is to expedite business. Of course, this does not give the chair the upper right to just assign it to council members. But if you look at the code, Florida Code, section 166.021B, the government body of a municipality may expand public funds to attract and retain business enterprises and use of public funds, which achieving of such economic development goals constitutes a public purpose. The purpose of this chapter, which confers powers and duties of the governing body of the municipality, including any powers not specifically prohibited by law, but can be exercised by the governing body of the municipality, shall be liberally construed in order to effectively carry out the purpose of this section. So I cannot believe the mayor acting improperly placing me in charge of the true duty of funds. Furthermore, as a resident and taxpayer and the one who raised this issue this year and last year during budget talks, I would pursue this matter regardless of the mayor placing me in charge or not, because it is my right and duty as a citizen to question any department like Bellar Beach. Now, going back to the July budget meeting, councilperson person before the conclusion of the budget talks, brought up the sheriff's cost. He noted that Bellar Beach portion was incorrect as we were overpaying and Bellar Shore's was underpaid. And further noted, it doesn't sound like the Sheriff's Department is going to say we shouldn't pay less money. These are all quotes, it was up the record. I had a question to our attorney in regards to our councilperson's position, and the question to our attorney was, who owes us? Our attorney then noted, it is, if it is the council's desire that he would like to work with the city manager on this, see if these funds could be collected, but clearly noted, any such pursuit would be based on time and money to pursue this and would be costly. And which... costly and would be cost effective. The reason I bring this up, no council member made a motion to have our attorney work with the city manager on this. Further noted, should be that no council member made any objection of the mayor placing me in charge of recollection of the funds. Surely I wasn't going to object since I was told that I'd been given the task. The record will further show that this matter of the budget then was closed. Next day, I asked for the sheriff's contract, and a day and a half later, we were ran into $48,000 in credit from the Sheriff's Department. Now, while I was looking over the sheriff's contract, I want to note number 12 of the agreement. Tonight, it was changed to 13 regarding fines. It says, all fines or other monetary fees for counties rendered in mind in any court as a result of charges made by the sheriff for offenses occurring within the city shall be distributed as provided by general law in the rules of the court. To the point of the matter, the only parking lots found in the town of Ballard Shores are the three lots, 6th, 12th, and 19th Street, given to the landowners. So noted beneficiaries, east of God Boulevard, which is Ballard Beach. I further want to note, for decades, any fines collected on those beneficiary lots went to the Ballard Beach, which used those funds for maintenance of the lots. It was only a few years ago Ballard Shores arbitrarily took away the fines from the residents of Ballard Beach, which was a valuable resource to maintain these lots. And to note, there is no provision in the contract that provides a tail of fines to be collected by the town of Ballard Shores. Therefore, I am making a motion because I am in full reading of the councilwoman's comments of August that a true figure is still owed to the city of Ballard Beach. Therefore, my motion is to have our attorney and city manager address going after Ballard Shores for the past underpayment of the use of the deputy so noted in the sheriff's contract for the years 2020 and 2021, along with reimbursement of any and all fines collected in so noted lots 2143 and 66 found under the definition of the tax partial legal description of Ballard Beach.
We'll have a second. That'll be a second.
But that was a, that was a motion?
A motion to go after. The motion asked in July was to have the attorney and the city manager go after the true collection of money owed back to people of Ballard Beach.
Second.
You made the motion. Discussion. I already discussed it. Comments?
Certainly, a true up would be appropriate to understand whether the correct amount was collected. So I don't have the objection to go over that.
Can you speak into the microphone, please, the House Attorney?
I think a true up would be appropriate, rather than, and I don't know if you want or not, but an explanation of how the amount was calculated would be fine.
Is that what the motion is for?
Well, my motion is for to go after Ballard Shores because the sheriff clearly said that they were reimbursing us when they did the geographical changes of size. So they did collect $48,000 from the Sheriff's Department. But from 2020 to 2021, Ballard Shores did two things. They took away our finding of the vehicles unauthorized parking in those lots, and they used excessive deputy services. The Sheriff's Department has paid, has reimbursed us, and I believe in full.
You're willing to proceed against Ballard Shore?
As the councilperson noted in the budget talks of July, that he didn't believe that we were going to collect anything from the sheriff. That the true, and I agree with him wholeheartedly that other money should be counted for Ballard Shores because they abused the time of lot of the sheriff's contract. Plus, number four on the contract doesn't give them the right to collect the funds. So you can collect.
That's all right.
I just might comment a couple of things. First of all, I believe that Member Bankard's heart was in the right place when he proceeded after our workshop to contact the Sheriff's Department. What I had commented on at the, this most recent meeting that we had, and I appreciate Member Bankard's, I guess, apology for how he reacted, I was just referring to, in the workshop that we had, the minutes showed that at some point after the mayor had agreed to have Member Bankard move forward in discussions with the contract with the Sheriff's Department, it then said after that, that the city manager would meet with Mr. Moore to put together and look at things to make sure we went forward properly, and then they would get back with council and let us know what their findings were. So that's the reference I made at that particular meeting, that that didn't take place because there was no time for that to occur, because Member Bankard contacted the Sheriff's Department because he wanted to try it out for the city. So I believe that. He just did it by doing that. The city didn't have the opportunity for the mayor and Mr. Moore to get together and delve into it deeper to find out what options were available to us so that we might have increased the amount of money we would have gotten back from the Sheriff's Department. That's why I made that statement.
But for the record, there was never a motion to go forward to have the city manager and the city attorney to look into this, which would have been needed because the city attorney, as noted, it's on the record, it's the council's desire.
Well, it was a workshop.
It was a workshop, and there was no directive from council to have him go after.
I don't know the meaning of the motion for that. I mean, certainly within his responsibilities, the city manager can try to pursue any collections or investigate.
He made the recommendation, but I'm saying there's no councilwoman person that said, I agree with that. He just can't, the city attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, just can't on his own accord say, okay, I'm going to look into this matter, which is in the board as you're handling.
The city manager certainly can't.
Sure, he can, but of council's desire.
How much of the charge is?
Well, I'm wondering if this is more of an accounting issue before it becomes a legal issue, because I would like to see on paper exactly why you feel that another community that just so happens to be writing on the same contract that we are, they owe us money.
Well, like I said, in number 12 of the contract, which is now number 13, for the past three years, fines are supposed to be collected by the city. Doesn't say anything about the town. Ballard Shores is no part of facilities except for our lots that are leased to the landowners of Ballard Beach. Arbitrarily, they just took on their own accord and says, okay, we're now going to write tickets and we're going to tell the deputy, he's not allowed to write tickets for Ballard Beach anymore. We used to collect those revenues, as the city manager said. We did get that revenue from the city or citation ordinance violations. What I'm saying is, for years, the used to be the assumption of one hour a day was allocated to Ballard Shores for deputy enforcement. Ever since they took over writing tickets, it's been well over an hour. It's been two, maybe three, four hours. So I'm saying for 2020, 2021, they owe us probably about $24,000 a year, like the sheriff said, why they gave us $48,000. Remember, they had no problems sending us a bill for $24,000 for legal expenses. I think we should do the same for them. Clearly, they abused the system. Clearly, they are continuing to abuse the system.
Any other discussion on this topic before we take the floor over?
It seems like this could be dealt with evenly.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me get everybody. It seems as though this could be dealt with evenly. I certainly support if we feel that we're owing money, if we feel that someone is inappropriately collecting fines when we should be the ones that are collecting it. You know, I'm happy to look into that. I think that can be done on an informed basis. And then come back with findings.
Well, that's what my motion is about, to have the city manager and the city attorney look into this.
That's not the way you stated it. You said, go after.
It says, here's my motion, is to have our attorney and city manager address going after Ballard Shores for the past underpayment of the use of the deputy so noted in the sheriff's contract for years 2020 to 2021, along with reimbursement of any and all fines collected in so noted lots 2143 and 66 found under the definition of tax partial legal description of Ballard Beach.
Councilmember, I think the, my perception of the division and the discussion, it may be semantics, but as praised, your motion opens with go after, which I think presumes the results that there's something to pursue, and I think some of the discussion of your other council members. And again, since your guys' discussion had, it seems like you're talking past each other a little bit. I think Member Bankard, what they're hearing, go after, sort of presuming the results of, and action shall be taken, whereas some of your fellow council members are expressing, can we investigate and then determine whether a go after is the appropriate action? I think that's what I'm hearing different members say, but again, it's your discussion and result.
I can modify by saying to address Ballard Shores for past underpayment of use of the deputies.
Well, the motion's already been signed. It's on the floor right now. Any other comments or questions? Do you want to vote on this now? You ready to vote?
Just because I suggested so that you seconded something doesn't mean in your favor. That isn't discussing.
Yep. Frankly, we'll go to the citizens for comments, and then we'll take the vote. Anyone like to speak on this topic? Nope. Citizens' comments are now closed. Renee, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
No.
Councilmember Elliott?
No.
And Mayor Gaddis?
No.
So the motion dies. All right, more unfinished business. Any counsel? Anyone?
I have something that I'm not quite sure procedurally how this is done, but I can suggest at least an item for a work session, and that is to review again the issue of filling an additional seat on the council. I think all of us here completely support a democratic process. We support independence and free thought, and everybody having their particular view. But we are in a position that one vote from any of us can defeat a measure, and I'd like that we reconsider rebuilding the council to a five member. Good.
Okay, well, I'm glad you brought that up because I was willing to address it anyway. Basically, we're having problems. Reasonably far, we've had, this, this meeting is two weeks overdue. The council meeting next month will be a week late from when it's supposed to be. I agree with Councilmember Elliott that we should, we should consider adding a fit council member before I go any further, but I think all of you for actually being here and serving on the council, each of you go the extra mile for Ballard Beach, and though we may not always agree, I still believe we make a great team. I also realize that sometimes we encounter unavoidable conflicts, and that is okay where life happens. So occasionally, we're going to have to miss a meeting. Unfortunately, it prevents, or at least it delays, city business from being conducted in time and manner. So we are in a bit of a pickle. Part of that is on me, but the reason why that happened was, I stated before, that I didn't just want to put three people that we really didn't know that well on the council just to fill seats, especially whenever we have elected officials here on this council. So today, I'm asking the council to resume accepting applications to have a fit council member to be selected at our October regular meeting. And for those that have already applied, I'd like, Renee, I'd like for you to reach out to each of them if the council agrees and see if they're still interested as being a possible candidate and would like to be considered again. I would also like to give those who were once concerned with Form 6 the opportunity to apply now that it is no longer required. I think that they may not even be aware that, as it stands right now, it's on hold indefinitely until the courts figure it all out. So that, I think it's possible that we may have more people to choose from. I don't think it's necessary to go to seven. I would think five is what we need to make this council, to fill the missing piece. So my question is to the council, what are your thoughts about opening up the application process and then elect a fit council member on October 14?
I'm in favor of that. I actually have had a couple of conversations with previous council members that I was confident the main reason that they had left the council was because of the Form 6. And now that I explained to them the current status of the Form 6 versus Form 1, they showed an interest, so.
I would like to comment on that. I don't, first off, I can say that I haven't really, anyone that left because of Form 6, I hated to see them leave. However, Form 6 could always come back and be, and this seat that we would be filling is, it will be occupied until 2026. So we've got two years, and the court system in the state of Florida have two years to decide what they're going to do with whether they're imposing our privacy is actually legal or not. I don't, haven't heard anything else about it, but here's my point I'm going to make about that. If we brought one of them back in and Form 6 came back, we'd be right back where we are now. So also, there are people that actually didn't complete Form 6, all throughout the county, and they just did it because they realized that this is what I have to do to do the job. So not going to hold it against them, but I am, personally, I'm against bringing anyone back that resides greater reportable of the 6. So that's my two cents on that. You good? Other comments or questions?
I agree with you 100%, Mr. Mayor. I guess Form 6 could be put back into place any day, okay? And they had the right to resign. Problem I had is the Form 6 has been talked about about three years in the state, and they knew that when they were running, probably passed sooner or later. So I'm not, I'm entertaining anybody previous from council that resigned because of Form 6. And the only one I can remember that did resign in Form 6 was Linda, Linda Lindestaff, as she knows, she's moving out of here. My biggest question is, do we have a council of seven, or do we have a council of five? And our attorney has given us, I guess, two versions of that thing. I would like to know which one we have.
I appreciate the inquiry. I have complained most recently that you have a council of seven. I've always said that you are a council of seven until, I consistently stated.
I've always said that you are a council of seven until, until, I consistently stated that if at your full composition until November 2026, you are a council of seven. I interpreted the import of other languages related to references to the council as to whether that meant the council has ceded or the council has provided for, and I determined that the more prudent, I think both are lawful and reasonable interpretations of your charter, but the more prudent approach to mitigate risk, which is my charge, is that that charter provision also should be interpreted in a manner that references the council in its existing form of all available seats. It has always been my guidance since before the charter votes and after, that were you to be of your full composition as provided for in the charter, you are a charter, you are a council of seven, seven available seats, how you choose. That said, your charter also provides that the role of filling vacancies on the charter, on the council, is the charge and responsibility of the remaining council members. And so I wish to defer to your discretion and respect your discretion as provided for in the charter voted on and approved by your residents. And so it is left to you folks on how to fill your vacancies, but there are, in fact, and have at all relevant times since the three vacancies arise, been three vacancies. My other advice to you as you folks embark on this process is I think that there's a general agreement among all of you that you need to begin filling at least one seat. Whether all of you agree, whether it's one, two, or three is up to you. I would suggest that you not get, again, for even the process, you not get too mired in that, but start by filling at least one, because the at least one vacancy is creating problems for you. I'm not saying you'll have the discourse tonight, Member Baker, I just want to answer your question and make sure that my, my advice on this is clear.
Well, if we have a council of seven, then we would need four votes to put it back personally.
I disagree with that.
Sensation, that's a dear analogy.
Go ahead. It's not analogy, it's an analysis, and I appreciate your perspective, but I'm charged with interpreting the code. I work for you folks, but my interpretation of your code, harmonizing language based on the statutes, the canons of statutory construction, giving every word meaning, and I did not consider this alone, I ran it by other attorneys as well to make sure that I was not created in a vacuum, and the consistent interpretation based on the language that says a vacancy shall be filled by, shall as compulsory language, shall be filled by a remaining vote of the, of the remaining members of the, of the council, and that's in 2.06C.
Yes, it is, and if you go prior to 2.06, okay, it talks about a quorum of four.
That's actually subsequent, it's in 2.07C, and so, and that is to the quorum, and it actually, actually begins with an independent clause that references 2.06C as an exception there, too. I, I understand provisions, again, we don't need necessarily agree. I give advice, as I joke in the past, I'm a husband and a father, I give advice all the time and have it ignored. That is my interpretation. I leave it to you folks on how you wish to administer it. You are therefore charged with how you proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, I appreciate you at least putting my mind at ease. The one example that, that you gave me earlier was that had we lost another council member and we were down to three, according to Mr. Baker, we could never. Now, that's how it says. We could never bring someone else in. I understand that.
He did not say that. That's my interpretation of if you read 2.07C to require a quorum, that would be at least four members or a majority of the remain of the council, and you interpret the council of seven. That was my interpretation, that it would work, that if you interpret them consistently that way, it could work, that in practicality, Mr. Baker has never once said that, and I'm not attributing that statement to you, sir. That was my interpretation, and why you have to harmonize it, I apologize.
What I was saying is, seat goes into action if someone, if council did reduce the quota. I see. All right. Well, what's the general consensus here? I would like to bring in one council member, not three, and the main reason why is because the people spoke at the last election, and it was unanimous that this city were at five council members. We have the opportunity to give that to them now. I don't believe that we're breaking any laws by doing it, and I also believe that we will be a better council if we go ahead and bring that, that person in, whoever it is. I understand that we will have to have a majority vote to select someone, but we can hash that out at a time, depending upon the number of candidates we have and qualifications, of course, and then debate, but that's what I'm asking to do, and I would just like to hear your thoughts, your thoughts, your thoughts on opening up the application process again, and I'm gonna lay back to work.
I absolutely support that. I do want to clarify a few things just so we know the rules, and that is, one is that we, the remaining members of the council, that I understand, can fill a position, and we can make it one, not all, and that majority of vote, the four, is what counts. Then, when five are in place, we are still a board of seven, therefore, the statute is still in place that says that we have to have four, we have a quorum. So one person can be absent, which I think maybe we're raising that it's just for the people's lives, it's been difficult, and we don't want to get in the way of making this stuff. So we have to have four, and then once the board has four, five seats filled, we still need a majority.
Still need four votes. So in the event you have four, example, should you appoint anybody to fill a vacancy? You reach five.
No.
That's how, say you're at a moment where you have five council members, so you have seven. If one of you is absent, you can still have a meeting, which is not the case right now.
Correct.
However, once you have that meeting, those who are meeting are still going to have a vote.
Yeah.
You can honestly say that, because you're still going to need four for affirmative then.
Because it's a majority of seven.
But at least it's not, it's not stopping city business, you know, the members. So the question at hand is, why would you put seven? Why would you, why would you want to put yourself back in the same situation you're announcing is absent? If, if we had three candidates that wanted to be on council?
Quorum is because we're going to five anyway, so it's somewhat awkward to bring people in and then.
But that's not where the quorum states right now, according to the attorney. The quorum at five would be three.
I think we're getting wired in the five points of the language, but.
I think we're setting ourselves up for a suit. That's what I'm worried about.
I think this sounds a little too weird.
Well, you know what? You have two attorneys here, okay? You had an attorney sitting in your seat, okay? And I'm not the attorney, but I can read, I mean, and I made these remarks last year that I believe the charter amendments could be challenged because they were poorly presented to the voting populace. You had a redundancy of people applying for their council jobs, even though Form 6 wasn't in front of them, and this council refused to accept them. I mean, I don't know why we did it. We wouldn't even have been in this situation right now. There's a man sitting right there, he got applied, he could have been up here, there was two other people right there, there was a father in the room, his son wanted to be on. We could have had some other people, and gone with the council. So I agree with this mess. Yeah? Well, any comments?
I'm in favor of moving forward for the five, but I do recall some of the voting that took place, and there was, Member Baker said, "I didn't agree with this mess," but the way you ended up voting would never have allowed us to move forward with anybody at that point. I guess it could, but it only went to three, but anyway, it was, at the time, we were not just considering one necessarily, I think we were open to going to seven, but nothing moved forward at that particular meeting. Currently, right now, because that's behind us, right now, I would be in favor of advertising for an open position and vote.
Thank you. Just a refresh, Mr. Roberts, okay? All due respect, when the three candidates came in, the charter amendments changed them. Remember, they had to file.
We were not getting filed with the secretary of state, it was part of the issue.
So we needed to have seven, okay? That was on the record.
I voted for everyone.
All right. Now, four months later, as the charter amendments have been filed, we still get seven. So do you understand how I'm confused? So we needed seven in January, but until the charter amendments changed, okay, we're waiting for seven to be filed, okay? We only need five. So now we're being told by our attorney that we need seven. Now, is that not?
That's not what he said.
So you need your seven, and then your fourth or the fourth. Because our council remains at seven.
To the set seven, yes.
Okay? So you see how I'm confused?
I've made no representations as to how many seats you folks should fill. I'm deferring to you as the charter officers, President, elected officials whose responsibility is to fill the vacancies. I at no point have outlined on whether you should have five, six, or seven, and frankly, not my decision to make. My advice to you has simply been about, about your quorum, about your votes, and again, I maintain at no point have I, have I, at no point have I manipulated this process or anything of the sort. I gave an opinion, and true to my duty as a, as a public officer, in service of the public trust, I looked at the job you folks were asking me to do without any accusation, challenge, or attack, and said, "I think I can manage my clients' risk better. I think this is a better way to interpret this code, and I view this charter, and I advise that." And that is why I, I work for you folks. If you're not happy with the job I'm doing, let me know, and that's all I have to say there.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right. Well, it sounds like I've got three people that are on board with moving forward. Renee, would you please advertise to start accepting applications and contact, well, there's one of them right there, but contact the prior candidates and see if they're still interested. And also, if anyone calls, please be fair, if they called and say, "I want to apply," and they have concerns about Form 6, would you please let them know that nothing is permanent? It's not permanently off, it's not permanently off, we don't know what's gonna, what's gonna happen, but if they do have concerns, at least let them know that, hey, Form 6 is always a possibility to come back. And what I would like to do is stop taking applications one week before the next council meeting, and then send us up the applications for review, and then we'll vote on December 14. Thank you very much. All right. Any other unfinished business? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
I would like to make a motion based on Member Baker's previous motion that failed. I think it's still a good idea for city manager and legal counsel, I know they meet many times during the week just to be a topic of discussion, when they do need regarding any other opportunities that would be available to us to save or get money back regarding the sheriff's contract. The reason I voted against the motion from Member Baker was I thought it was too specific regarding where we were going with it. I would, I would just like the city manager and Mr. Moore to, during their weekly discussions, look into other opportunities for our city to get additional funding back.
Second, I don't, I don't even think that that requires a motion, but if you, if you want to go through the process, I think we can just ask, would you look in? Who and I get some information to determine whether this is something worth pursuing?
Agreed. And maybe some of the things that Member Baker brought up will come out of that conversation. I have no idea.
Would you like to retract your motion?
Yes.
All right. So, Mr. Reifler and Mr. Moore, you have a task assigned by the council to just look into things and give us a report based upon Mr. Baker's accusations. I guess that's the best way to say it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other unfinished business before we move over to council comments? No, sir. Had enough, huh? All right. This month, we begin with Councilmember Baker. My head's still spinning, so. Thank you, Mr. Baker. I was actually not even gonna call on you because of your, your stuff. All right. Councilmember Roberts?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have been going around and looking at the work that's being done by our contractor from the streets. Basically, when I'm coming from the east side to the west side, I take a ride to go to 20th where I live, and I pretty consistently just drive through 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th, and then I'm home to see the work that's being done. And overall, I think they're doing a pretty good job. I always, we've had a lot of rain lately, and I take a look at the flow in the new gutters that have been put in, and for the most part, the water is flowing in the direction it's supposed to at the rate that I think makes sense. A couple of times, they've had the little devices in front of the drains, things like that, and of course, it's not gonna let the water get out as quickly as it needs to. So I'm confident that once the construction is completed, and based on what I've visualized, the water's gonna flow properly, and the citizens are gonna be happy. So that's all good.
All right. I appreciate that. Mr. Roberts, Councilmember Shaw Elliott.
I actually have three items to address tonight, so I'll try and agree. One is tomorrow night is the first night of the, or two, the second night of the Sunset Social, so we encourage all of our citizens to come on by and come to the back porch here and meet your neighbors. And so nothing in particular is scheduled, just an opportunity to come and see folks, bring the kids, bring the dogs, bring games, bring nothing, it's just a nice, enjoyable opportunity to meet. I do want to emphasize also that this is a test, and that it's only going to be offered for the next two months, so please come and show your support. Next thing is that, as everybody may have noticed, there's an election coming up, and I encourage all of our citizens to make sure that you're registered as a voter. If you want to vote by mail or with any other alternative means, watch those deadlines, make sure that you're registered in advance of that. If you want to vote by mail, get it in on time, and you might see me there on the day of the election. I was my goal, and you're really a person who's just trying to work on that by. The last thing I want to mention is something that will be on the ballot, and that is Amendment Two, which would establish as a constitutional right a recognition of the right to hunt and fish. And on its face and in the summary for that amendment, that seems very innocuous and something that all of us would indeed support. I want to offer people to consider some of the issues involved in this amendment. One is that we already have a statute that has been in place for a long time that recognizes the right to hunt and fish, and it's not being challenged, there's no effort to try to undo that, so I think that the Amendment to, to the Constitution would be not necessary. But there are two elements regarding this amendment that are not apparent, and one is that in addition to recognizing the right to hunt and fish, it includes any traditional means. And so what this means is that things that have been traditional methods of taking game will come back, even though over time they've been found to be inhumane. So things like bear traps, things like illness, things like spears, killing by poison, all of those things might be able to come back if we have an amendment that said there's a constitutional right to hunt and fish by traditional means. I ask. I ask you to consider that. And lastly, it also says that hunting and fishing will become the preferred method in the state of Florida for managing wildlife. And that's a huge step. We have all sorts of measures through our agencies to look at scientific measures and other means of controlling wildlife and encouraging and supporting wildlife and supporting good conservation efforts. To say that hunting and fishing becomes the preferred method is way overreached, in my view. So I encourage you to look at that. Don't be deterred by the beginning language because this thing is far broader than the right to hunt and fish. And in any event, please get out and vote.
Thank you. I don't have any comments other than thanks to everyone who actually made it to the very end. And if anyone's at home, thank you for watching. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, get out of here. We're looking at... Sorry.